And why?
Yes, yes. She's like, no problem, Dad. All right, guys. Get her set up for that meeting. I'll be back.
Okay. Looks like Chris is here.
Can you go out the back?
Hey, everyone.
Did you say Chris has to leave early? After what? The fence code? Okay. All right, well, we should. We should probably get started then. Okay. Okay. Britt, would you call the meeting to order, please? As soon as you're ready?
Call the meeting to order at 7:01.
Thank you. Could you take the roll call, please?
Commissioner Dai?
Present.
Commissioner Rivera?
Present.
Commissioner Glasser?
Here.
Vice Chair Reese?
Present.
Commissioner Duggan? Chair Williams?
Here.
Commissioner Cornell?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Mahol?
Here.
And we'll have Stephanie, uh... Absent for now.
Okay, we have a quorum. All right, let's, um... Let's start out with the approval of the minutes. Has everyone had a chance to review them? And any comments? Questions?
I've reviewed it. I can't vote on it, but it, uh... Good job. I felt like I was here when I read the minutes.
Yeah, very good. I was gonna second that. Any other, any comments? If not, could we have a motion to approve the minutes as written?
Second?
Timmy? Second by Mike?
Commissioner Glasser? Commissioner Duggan?
Yep.
Commissioner Dai?
Yep.
Chair Williams, I'm gonna abstain here.
Abstain, right.
Commissioner Rivera?
Yes.
Commissioner Cornell?
Yes.
Vice Chair Reese?
Yes.
And abstain for Mayor Pro Tim. Okay.
Okay, thank you. I don't believe we have any public for any, uh... Comment on non-agenda items. Anyone else online that's from the public? I don't believe so. Okay, so we'll, um... We'll go right into our action items. The first one is a... Is the municipal, uh... Solar code update. And I believe, Miranda, you were going to...
I'm gonna do this one, and then Britt will do all the rest.
Okay.
So, uh... The town has been working on an update to solar, specifically PV systems, and really taking a look at what might be some of the barriers to being able to install either a rooftop or a ground-mountain system, and looking at this specifically from kind of a yard-in-bulk standpoint. If you recall, we did bring this before the Planning Commission, um... Last year. And, uh... The feedback that we received from the Planning Commission and the Board of Trustees, as well as other advisory boards and commissions, was to continue forward with drafting an ordinance amendment to Chapter 16. Uh... So that is what is before you, is that official ordinance. Um... Again, really what this does, it does make some slight amendments to yard-in-bulk. And then I'll just kind of highlight a couple is really looking at lot coverage, and that it wouldn't necessarily be considered in the percentage if you're able to do vegetation under a ground-mountain system, that you can install a ground-mountain system closer to the edge of your property line, and that, from a height standpoint, you can go five feet above where your roof height is, but if you're already at 35 feet, there is an allowance to go upwards to 40. And so those are the main changes. And the point of this, again, is to remove any barriers from people who want to do solar but already have the height limitation, or they're looking at the alternatives like a ground-mountain system or adding solar to, say, like a carport, and meaning that to be closer to their setbacks. So that's what is before you. And we have Attorney Madsen online who helped to draft this ordinance, and we're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you. Um... It's been a while since we've looked at this. I seem to recall we had a discussion about setbacks, particularly for the ground system. If you had a ground array, that, um... So do we... Did we abolish all, um... Setbacks? We talked about doing that.
We didn't abolish it. What we did is we stuck with accessory setbacks. So in a lot of the different zones, that's five feet. And so what we're saying is that for any of your lot lines, you could come five feet off for a ground-mountain solar system, um... And follow the accessory. For most, it's five feet, but it really is whatever your accessory setback is for these systems. Right. But this would be for ground-mountain solar.
Okay. All right?
And to clarify, we did do that for even if it's coming off the street, because currently there is no accessory, um... Setback for if you're coming off of the street or the front yard. So we are saying that you would still stick with the accessories for your side setback, even if you're trying to build the ground-mountain solar off of the frontage of your property, because we didn't want that to be a barrier as well.
Okay. Any other questions?
A clarification question about the used group table on pages 15, 16, and 17. Uh... The only change is what's highlighted and in bold, right? It's just an addition. Got it? Cut. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I did have a question. I thought that, and, uh... Steve and I discussed this a little bit in the pre-meeting, that there was some discussion about whether or not 40 feet was gonna be excessive, uh... To go to allow that full five feet. And I thought there was, when we had this discussion, even though it's been a pretty long time ago, some discussion about looking at some other options and getting back to us with some more accurate numbers as opposed to what I thought was a kind of a swag that five feet was about right on how much. But maybe, you know, they talked about some, uh... Low-profile solar, different things like that. Um... You know, so I... I don't know if anybody else has concerns about a height of 40 feet, but that seems to be a prevailing issue in this town. And to have that be available without any kind of public review or a chance for the neighbors to weigh in seems, uh... I don't know.
So after the planning... Oh, sorry, Jim.
Go ahead, please, continue.
The Planning Commission gave that feedback. Uh... We did take it back to the Solar Ordinance Subcommittee, as well as the Sustainability Advisory Board. And the consensus was that allowing a building to go to 40 feet with solar was appropriate, um... Because all ground-mountain solar systems are gonna be as flush to the roof as possible. That's still in the code. And so not a lot of buildings are at 35 feet. I think Tungsten Village is probably the only one. I couldn't even tell you the exact height over there. I mean, it's just not common that anyone is building that, but that you would need at least some, a five-foot threshold to work within for any ground-mountain solar system. There isn't, there wasn't, from the solar experts, any sort of, like, alternative, nor did they want to pigeonhole an owner into using a certain type of solar system just because their home was at 35 feet. Felt like they should still be allowed to pursue, you know, rooftop solar, and understanding, though, that it does need to still be mounted as flush as possible to that 35 feet.
Yeah, and as I recall, when we suggested keeping it as something that you would go for a variance for, there was quite a bit of pushback on that, too, because I recognize, I remember, the idea was we want to remove as many barriers, but at the same time, we have to, you know, consider the public and the neighbors and all that, you know? So that's my only concern. I don't know if anybody else feels that way.
Right, and we did talk about the variance, but to your point, the feedback from SAB and the Solar Subcommittee was just like, that is that, that is a barrier. And that is a more significant barrier than just, you know, saying yes or no, you can do this or you can't. A variance is an intense process, and it's costly. And so wanting to remove that, which is why the Solar Subcommittee did decide that ultimately they wanted to leave the language as is.
This covers not just solar PV, but also solar hot water, right?
This is just specific to PV systems. So we did talk a little bit. Leah Haney is officially on, too, and so says Sustainability Coordinator online. We did talk about coming forward with another ordinance that talks about other EV-related items like vehicles, um... Or other household additions. But this is specifically just to solar systems.
Yeah, I happen to just put these on our roof. I don't know that anything here in Netherlands or in the industry anymore that requires a tilt beyond the roof line. Five feet does seem a lot, but, uh... On top of 35. But I think we're talking about a case that's so small, I'm not too worried about it.
And it could be that we have that discussion at the time of, uh... SRU, um... Or when we're looking at the design or something, and they might suggest that they... But yeah, that's right. I mean, even solar's changed a lot since we've discussed this. Yeah.
I feel like the only time now you would have that sort of tilt on a roof would be on like an earth-burn kind of house or like a, like a flat-roof house, like the green one over there in Old Town. Um... So, yeah, in most cases, it would just go with the tilt of the roof.
All right. Any other questions?
Was there a height limitation on the ground mount?
No.
No, I'm not an expert on ground mount, but I would assume that they... I don't know, Tom, you know, if, if...
They'd never get to be very high.
Yeah, I would assume they wouldn't be the size, the height of them.
It can only be as high as the panel, and that's if you put it vertical, which you wouldn't.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that even if you stack three, it's still under 12 feet.
Well, there was a discussion to have it above ground a bit because of snow and so forth, so it wouldn't get buried all the time. But that'd be about the only additional height.
I think it would be a very courageous person to put it above the roof line with our wind.
Actually, and I'm sorry, Linda, I stand corrected. We did put in the ordinance that you couldn't go over the accessory height, which is high. I don't know, I have my head what accessory height is. Um... Yeah, yep, yep, Britt's right. Somewhere between 20 to 25. So you can't exceed that, which I would feel like would be a very tall...
Pretty sure it's 20.
...enormous system, which may require the SRU anyways, because you might be looking at then a medium or large-scale system.
Sure.
Okay, any other questions? Yes?
Well, yeah, I just wonder, uh... I know that we'll... I guess it'll be covered under an SRU process, but Ron's, you know, informational presentation, you know, one of the things that we asked him to consider was how, you know, solar could be incorporated, or it's already incorporated in there. Uh... And I'm pretty sure his building was gonna go to 35 feet. So, you know... And it was gonna be a flat roof, so that I could see that being a possibility. I mean, when you say it's unlikely that somebody could get something to 40 feet of the height, I'm just saying that I don't think it's out of the realm of possibility.
In this one...
That's all I have to say.
Yeah, I don't think, um... Even i-if he's at 35 feet, I can't see it taking beyond another five. I'm comfortable with it the way it's written.
Okay, um...
One more clarification question. Seems like there's a rather large gap between the small and medium-scale solar systems, like the small scale is limited to up to, oh, 1,750 square feet, and medium scale is 40,000 and below. I'm just curious why, excuse me, oh, why there, why there's the limitations are drawn there. Not so much on the small scale, but on medium scale, 40,000 is pretty big.
Yeah, the, and let me try to, I didn't, I don't have the presentation up right in front of me. There was, that was a recommendation by the solar experts that we had on our Subcommittee. I'm not sure I could speak to the why. Um, I'll see if I can try to find the, um... Presentation. So if you, Commissioner Dai, if you can come back to me on that. Actually.
Okay, um... I will open it up to the public if there, if we have any public. I think we do now.
And actually, I do have, it just took me a minute to get there. So the information that we pulled in terms of, like, recommendations for definitions actually came from Soul Smart, which is the organization we're working through to get solar designation. And this is what they recommended. Again, can't answer the why, but that is where the information came from originally.
Thank you, Miranda.
Anyone from the public wish to speak on this? Having heard nothing, I guess we'll, we'll close the public comment, and we'll go back to the commissioners for final comments. Roger, you wanna start out?
Um... Well, I thought the discussion was accurate to what we had talked about. And thank you, Jim, for bringing up those. Those were the issues. Um... Would've been easier if there had been just a little wiggle room with the group, but, um... I feel that it's probably gonna be one or two instances, maybe. So it's not that... Nothing to have a heart attack over, so, yeah, I'll go for it.
Linda?
I think the issues that we had were addressed, and they were readdressed tonight. Um... And anything with the, uh... Solar installations would go through a special review regardless?
Only for medium and large. So anything up under that 17... Eighteen, 17, and some chain?
Right, right.
It's used by right.
Okay, and so I, I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah. Which is probably where more of the problems would be with the large.
With the large, right.
Uh, Jim Reese? Any further comment?
No, I just wanted, I just recalled that we discussed that, and they were pretty firm on it. And, you know, sometimes you gotta accept something for the greater good, so I can support this.
Okay, Timmy?
Yeah, um... I wasn't on the PC when all this was, um... In the initial stage, but everything seems well-thought-out and well-researched, and at the end of the day, totally reasonable, so I'm for it.
Okay, Mike?
Yep, nothing further to add. I like solar.
You like solar? Good. Tom?
No, I think this was, uh... This was a long process. I appreciate, uh, everything the Subcommittee did, that Cynthia did to get this in position. I'd love to see us go from bronze to silver and make a run for gold if we can do it.
Yep. Yep, that's a good point. Now, any other comment, Mike? Oh, did she join? Oh, okay. Uh, Chris? Sorry?
It's okay, I'm good, yeah, I like it.
Okay. All right, I don't have any other comments. My only concern originally was that, um... But like Jim said, I think, um... It's only gonna be a few instances, and, and I think most of those are gonna be large-scale, and we can deal with that as part of the SRU or the review process, so... With that, uh... Would anyone like to make a motion?
I move to recommend approval of Ordinance 843, amending Chapter 16 of the, uh... Netherlands Municipal Code, the, uh... Solar and PV System Regulations.
Okay, I'll second. Thank you, Mike. Go ahead, take the vote.
Commissioner Cornell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Mahol?
Yes.
Vice Chair Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Glasser?
Yes.
Commissioner Duggan?
Yep.
Commissioner Dai?
Yes.
Commissioner Rivera?
Yes.
And Chair Williams?
Uh, yes. Okay, motion passes. We'll move on now. I'm, I'm sorry. Oh, okay, okay. We'll move on to, um... Action item number two, which is the municipal fence code update. And Britt, I assume you will be introducing this?
Yes. Um... So, long time coming. Just a brief summary. During the January 25th meeting, it was brought to the Planning Commission's attention that the Board of Trustees requested the PC to review the fence code and offer recommendations for ways it could be, um... Cleared up for any ambiguity or inconsistency. Uh... Formal discussion at the Planning Commission, uh... Began, uh... January 25th. We then discussed it further on March 15th and April 26th. The Planning Commission directed the formation of a Subcommittee, which included Commissioner Rivera and town staff. The initial issues brought to the PC's attention was the, should we match the IRC height code? And where should the fence height be measured from? During the March 15th meeting, Commissioner Rivera presented two options to be considered for the fence height. One was changing directly to seven feet to eliminate any confusion. The other was keeping the fence height at six feet, which is our current, which was our current code, um... And adding the language for variable fence heights to allow additional design components. Overall, the PC found it would simplify if we just went seven feet across the board. After reaching out, um... And researching to various sources, Commissioner Rivera presented picture diagrams and new language to be possibly added to the, the Netherlands Municipal Code to help assist town staff and third-party officials better understand where the fence height should be measured. The PC agreed with Commissioner Rivera's recommendation to include the addition of the diagrams to our code. The discussion of this meeting brought forth some additional clarities needed and issues with the fence code, including, does IRC or IBC recommend fire-safe materials for constructing a fence? And should we recommend those materials or require them? When it comes to screening of a junkyard and an individual's ability to build an eight-foot fence, which property owner gets to build that fence? And should the PC consider changing fine amounts for the fence code? Um... At the April 26th meeting, um... After being presented, uh... Fire Marshal Jocelyn's recommendation for the fire-safe material, um... The PC found it would be better to offer it as a recommendation versus, uh... Requirement. Um... It's not really cost-effective to a lot of the residents, although we do see the safety aspect of it. Um... The PC decided that both property owners should be able to screen that junkyard. Um... After reviewing the recommendation of Commissioner Rivera to not move forward with changing the fine amounts, the PC agreed that would be the best step moving forward. After no additional recommendations and agreements with the recommendations Commissioner Rivera and town staff presented, it was decided to move forward with this draft ordinance. Um... Since... Actually, I'll move forward. Um... So really, uh... Ordinance is attached. Hopefully, you all have reviewed it. Um... So the question's before the board is, do you, uh... Recommend that the Board of Trustees approve Ordinance 842, amending Chapter 16 of the Netherlands Municipal Code?
Okay, thank you. Um... Chris, would you like to offer any additional comments or info?
I think Brittany covered the summary and the history. Um... If there's any questions I can answer, I'd be happy to answer.
Okay. Thank you. Any, any questions?
There's really no new information over our discussion the last Planning Commission meeting on this, right?
Um... That...
Yeah, basically, the, uh... The last meeting kind of, uh... Firmed up, you know, what everyone's opinions and wishes were. And then our goal was to have the time to post what the new language would be, uh... For the public in order to provide public comment and, uh... Have the amount of time that was needed in order for us to vote on it. So, yeah, not, not much has changed. Um... That's kind of why we're, we're doing it now.
Gotcha, thanks, Chris.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, any other questions? If not, I'll open it up to the public. If we have some public or any comments. Okay. Having heard none, I'll, I'll close the public comment, and we'll go back to commissioners for any last-minute, uh... Comments. Okay, nothing?
Uh... I think Jim was trying to say something, but we can't hear you for some reason.
Jim, are you on mute?
He's unmuted, but, uh... Something's going on. Yep, there you go. He's dialing back in.
Think he's dialing in. Jim? Can you hear us? Wonders of Technology. Can't hear you. Nope, he's gonna...
Did we end up making any changes as far as the building materials? Or we determined?
No, we're just recommending it. Um... The cost is significantly higher.
So we didn't, like, make that a requirement? You have to...
No, I, uh... I actually made a Word document that I'm going to pass by, uh... Fire Marshal Jocelyn to review, and it's something I plan on handing out to new builds if they're interested.
Mm-hmm, cool. Jim, can we hear you? Can you hear us?
Sorry about that, I, I... Yeah, I hit the wrong button there. Next one, I hung up on you guys and had to call back. So I just wanted to, you might have said this, but I was off the line. Uh... I wanted to thank you guys for defining what a junkyard was in here, because when we discussed this last month, there was some question if just some old cars or slightly junk was there, you know, did that mean the neighbor could build up, uh... A higher-level fence to eight feet? So I appreciate that you put that in the ordinance specifically, uh... Stating that it has to be some type of a licensed business or salvage yard or junkyard or something like that.
So anything over seven feet, then, must go to get a variance. Is that correct?
That's correct.
That is correct, yep.
Yep, okay. And could it go, could it exceed eight feet for a variance? For whatever reason?
So only for those special, uh... Reasons can they go to eight feet? Um... If they don't fall into those categories, then they would have to get a variance. If they don't fall into those categories, then they would have to get a variance. And then if anyone wants to go beyond eight feet, they would have to get a variance.
Okay. All right. Any other comments or questions? If not, do we have a motion?
I move to approve. I move to recommend approval of Ordinance 842 amending Chapter 16 of the Netherlands Municipal Code.
Okay.
Second.
Second by Roger. Go ahead, Britt.
Commissioner Duggan?
Yep.
Chair Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Rivera?
Yes.
Commissioner Cornell?
Yes.
Vice Chair Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dai?
Yes.
Commissioner Glasser?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Timahol?
Yes.
Approved.
Okay, motion passes. Two for two. Okay, moving on to the third action item, Municipal Code Address Signs Code Update. And Britt, you said that you'll introduce this one?
Yes, I will. I don't, I can try to call Fire Marshal Jocelyn if anyone asks questions, but for the most part, I believe I should be able to answer it.
Okay.
So last PC meeting, Town Staff and Fire Marshal Andrew Jocelyn presented a summary on the unclear and outdated current Netherlands Municipal Code that pertains to address signs and recommendations for new possible code language to ensure quick and accurate response times by the Netherlands Fire Department. Below, you will find the signage that Fire Marshal Jocelyn is recommending. So it would be a reflective sign, four-inch minimum characters, half-inch minimum stroke, white lettering, green background, attached to a metal T-post, or non-combustible approved means, four to six feet above the grade of the road, legible from both directions, some sort of exception for mounting directly onto the residence's building within 30 feet from the public way. The PC supported drafting an ordinance to include Marshal Jocelyn's recommendation in the signed code. How... Ooh. Oh, yes. Sorry about that. The PC supported drafting an ordinance to include Marshal Jocelyn's recommendation in the signed code. However, upon further discussion with Attorney Madison, it was noted that grandfathering in old signs would likely create issues with tracking and enforcement with Town Staff. Since the desire of the PC and Town Staff is not to require everyone to comply with the new signed code standards, if the address signs are adequate for the Netherlands Fire Department, the draft ordinance only requires new builds and homes with no signs to comply with the Netherlands Fire Department recommendations outlined above. The PC is being asked to consider Ordinance 844 to determine whether it's ready to move on to the Board of Trustees for consideration and adoption. Does the PC recommend the approval of Ordinance 844 amending Section 8104 of Code for property sets? Is the question above the board?
Okay. Thank you. Maybe a quick question for, historical question for Roger. When we built our house 30 years ago, there was already a green sign on a tree, you know, the address. Is it, is this the same size as existing? The font size of the numbers, is it the same as it was before?
I don't know. I'm not a...
I think a lot of those are either 30 years old or too small compared to the code.
That's sort of my thought, but I just was curious. They went to a bigger font.
Slightly one.
I mean, yeah, like, a lot of ones you'll see, like, the numbers are like, what, an inch and a half? And we're calling four inches now, so...
Yeah, I believe so. In our code, it's at least one-inch height. So it's going up three inches is what it looks like.
Okay, so it's considerably larger.
Yes.
Yeah, three, it's not big though.
And so this would be primarily for new builds? Or permit, new permits?
New builds or houses that don't currently have signs. And so the plan would be any calls the Fire Department gets, and as they get on-site, if they're not finding a sign, or as I am doing the new permitting for a new build, this would be what they need to comply with.
Okay. And can you give us an update on, there was some discussion last time about whether the town would pay for it, or a grant could pay for it, or it'd be the responsibility of the homeowner?
So based on how it's written now, it would be the responsibility of the homeowner. There's been no grants secured for it, and it's not budgeted within Town Hall, as far as I know. Miranda can correct me if I'm wrong. So there hasn't been a source of funding yet, but I'm sure we would hear an update if the Fire Department's able to do that. They do still plan on helping anyone that would want to change their signs or needs help with the installation. They do still plan to help do that.
Well, and I guess something we'll add, while we are interested in, of course, securing grant funding, it's not something we would budget for, because as you build your new home, you should be doing this anyways. And if you're out of compliance with code, you've always been out of compliance with code, and just like any other enforcement, we would expect that you would cover the cost of coming back into compliance, if you didn't have a sign at all.
Right. But if you have, if you have a sign, even though it's one inch...
And I think that's where the grant funding would come in, where we're not requiring you to replace, but if you're really interested in complying with this code, you know, you do have a clear address sign, then maybe we would have a pool of funding, but we would like that to come in grant format and not something we would budget through town.
So part of my question was whether a grant will still, will be pursued, or is being pursued?
Not by town, but I think by Marshal Jocelyn.
Yeah, I know Fire Marshal Jocelyn is still looking into it. He has a couple of projects he's working on to kind of help the town as a whole, but I know it's something the Fire Department's still looking at, because they would like this to be uniformed and be able to provide that to the people if possible with a grant.
Okay.
Thank you for any additions, update.
Yep.
I just want to provide some clarification as to what the draft of the ordinance really says and when people need to come into compliance. So it says that the requirements for residential property owners in the draft ordinance are effective as of October 1, 2023. But then also you have your non-conforming signs. And so anybody who doesn't meet then this new address sign requirement would have a non-conforming sign. Those people would need to come into conformance when they apply for a building permit, or the property owner applies for a permit also then for a detached garage. And then the other piece is that all signs, except those that have been granted a variance by the Board of Zoning Adjustment, must conform to the regulations five years from the adoption date of the ordinance. So in other words, everybody needs to be in compliance by October 1 of 2028.
Oh, okay.
Gets me to read it.
Is that, is that in the ordinance?
It is, yes. So you have to read 18104 with 1899. So essentially, people are, would have a non-conforming sign.
I see.
If they're not in compliance. And that's okay. It's a right to have a non-conforming sign. But again, if you're applying for a building permit, or there's a change in ownership of the property, all of these other reasons and non-conforming sign section, say your sign is moved or altered, and you're putting up a new sign, then you have to put up a sign that's in conformance. But in addition to those reasons, 1899B says that then all signs must be in conformance five years from the adoption of the date of the ordinance.
Yep. Yeah, I saw that. I just missed it before. Okay. Any other questions?
A little question about, so if somebody gets a building permit for either primary or detached garage or accessory building, will they be made aware that that's now, that's now a requirement to update the signs? Because if I'm building a shed in the backyard and get a permit for that, I wouldn't expect necessarily to need to update the sign in my front yard.
Yeah, so that, since the permitting would go through me, that would be me notifying them that they would need to come up in compliance. If Marshal Jocelyn is able to then get a grant for it, then it would be that it was funded through that, but if not, then it would be on the owner for these situations that Attorney Madison was speaking about.
Got it. Makes sense.
So you would be reminded, I think, is what she's saying?
Yeah. Thank you.
Yes, basically, I would remind you in order to get your certificate of completion or certificate of occupancy, you would need to comply with code.
Any other questions?
Are these, I haven't had to buy these signs. Are they pretty much something you can get over at Ace Hardware? They'll know exactly what you need.
Yeah, so Fire Marshal Jocelyn said they're costing about $25, $25, and that they were rated for seven years. And right, they're trying to still find like a source online to where they could just provide this link. It would be a link that is on town website that would make it easier, but he's still sourcing that, so making sure there's no issues, or, you know, people being like, I can't order this, it's out of stock. And so the Fire Department is still working on that aspect to make it easier for the residents.
It's a bargain compared to a water tap fee.
I agree.
Is there a specific place that it's supposed to be placed? Does it say that in the ordinance?
Yeah, it's pretty much within, yes.
If it's on the house?
So I know if it's, if it's attached to your house, it needs to be visible by 30 feet for the Fire Department. So there needs to be mitigation in that regards. As for the placement, I mean...
So the codes, the address...
Oh, go ahead, Miranda.
I was gonna say, so it says address sign totally posted, no more than 10 feet from the driveway to the resident, and not more than 10 feet from the public way, which the driveway access is. So really, depending on where your home is to your setback, you may need to put it on a metal post, which is another, talks about attaching it to the metal post or non-combustible approved means. I think it really just depends on where your home is to that front lot line.
So no more trees?
Defensible spaces.
Well, it's a very simple thing, and I guess I didn't realize, I spoke last time, and I didn't know that that was going to go around and around again. I'm actually surprised that they're $25. I would have thought it would have been about 10, but the post will cost you less than 10. So I mean, to take the security of your home, or for all these emergencies that may come up, I mean, the idea that we would even have to go to the government and get a grant and do all this stuff, to me, I'm sorry, if you can't spend $50 on your own family's welfare, then what are we supposed to do? So yes, this is very good, and let's get it done.
Any other, any other comments? Jim, do you have anything online? If he can still hear us?
I can still hear you? No, I support this. I think we've, just like Roger said, it seems like a no-brainer that you would want the Fire Department to be able to find you.
You can get them for $22.15 at safetysign.com.
Oh, there's a bargain right there. 10% off.
And if you buy 40 of them, it's only $19.45.
Well, there you go.
Can you change the numbers?
Yeah, be all the same number.
Right.
Fire Department will may not like that.
So one can blow away every year and put it back.
That's right. Oh, gosh. Okay, well, I don't think we have any public, but I'll offer to open it, if anyone wishes to speak. And I will close the public comment. And any other final comments from Planning Commission members?
Good job, Britt.
Since this is a fire district, is it required for residents outside of the city limit?
So I believe that that's Marshal Jocelyn's intention, but our municipal code, of course, won't.
Not our problem.
Not our problem. No, I mean, that's, so I think that is his goal, but that's something he'd have to do with the county for the further, for the rest of the district.
We could be the pathfinder for the county. Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, and I think they are on this same path as well, to making this change.
Are they?
I'm pretty sure.
Let's get there first.
Yes.
Agreed.
Exactly. Okay, any no further comments? Do we have a motion?
I motioned to, I moved to, I moved to recommend approval of Ordinance 844 recommending Netherlands Municipal Code, Section 18-104. Property address signs required.
Second.
Roger, seconds.
Mayor Pro Timahol?
Yes.
Wait, can I just make a clarifying? Is this 844, or I think it's supposed to be 843?
I think it's 844, because I was looking, I think we have solar as 843.
Okay, so, all right, good.
Yeah, and I think this was supposed to be 844, but we ended up having it as 843 on the ordinance, but the AM's is 844.
Okay.
Fence is 842.
We'll clarify.
Yeah, it says 843 at the start of the ordinance.
Right.
Yeah, that's supposed to be 844, because we have, we have fence is 842, solar's 843, sign is 844.
Okay.
Somewhere we just got off, Jennifer.
Okay. I guess you just make that quick change.
Yep.
Okay. Good catch. Okay, we had a second. Go ahead.
Vice Chair Reese? Commissioner Glasser?
Yes.
Commissioner Dai?
Yes.
Chair Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Rivera's no longer on. Commissioner Cornell?
Yes.
Commissioner Duggan?
Yes.
And I'll repeat, Mayor Pro Timahol?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Motion passes, three for three. Do we have any more while we're on a roll? Okay, that concludes our action items for this evening. We have a couple of informational items, and I guess, Britt, you're still on the hot seat to introduce these.
I am.
Okay.
So a quick summary, the Planning Commission is an appointed board, which reviews developments in land use codes specific to the PC's purview in land use and zoning. Board members must be legal residents of the town in Netherlands and serve for a four-year term. Commissioner Glasser and Commissioner Herring have served for four years, which means their current terms will end June 1, 2023. Commissioner Glasser has submitted her application for reappointment. We just got clarification yesterday that Commissioner Herring has expressed she plans to seek reemployment. Is that correct?
That is correct. We did end up extending the deadline. Your AM says that the deadline for these is May 17. We extended it to May 31, and Commissioner Herring submitted her reappointment application yesterday.
Good.
So Commissioner Glasser and Commissioner Herring will go for official reappointment before the Board of Trustees on June 6.
Yeah, I had, Britt had told me it was extended, so I reached out to Commissioner Herring, since we hadn't heard from her, and she got in touch with you, so that was good. Did we get any other applications?
No.
No? Okay. Well...
Does anyone have any questions regarding the vacancies or the applications?
Now, technically, the applications are still open until the 31st, so I think it happened.
Right. And this goes before the Board of Trustees on the second, I'm sorry, the sixth? No.
Yep. June, um...
The third is Saturday.
I think the second is right.
It's the sixth. It's the sixth. Yep. Okay.
Exactly, as Britt wrote it up.
No. Nope. You're paid in our appreciation of all that you do for...
Yes, we're very grateful.
Is that not worth its weighing gold, Commissioner Cornell?
Are we also eligible for mental health counseling?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, you are.
Okay, any other questions?
My assumption is, because Mayor Pro Timahol can confirm, we actually, across the board, all of our vacancies only have enough applicants for the number of vacancies, so this likely will just go on consent, Commissioner Glasser. I do know the board does appreciate when you're there, so they can thank you for your service, and you can introduce yourself to them, but I think it'll be the first thing to likely go on that meeting.
Oh, so it'll be consent item?
Yeah, just because we, unless we receive more applications in the next week, but right now, we do only have enough applications for vacancies.
Okay.
On Pro-SAB, SAB, and the DDA and Planning Commission.
Okay. All right. Anything else on this item? If not, we'll move on to the Town Staff Report.
You want to do yours first, or I'll take it, and I'll, or I'll go first? So I can just, so as a reminder, I'm throwing it all in, so you get everything. So I'll just do a super fast overview of kind of the top highlights. The town is in the middle of a compensation study. The Board of Trustees did approve town to work on a job analysis, job description analysis and a compensation study. And the point of that is just to see where staff fall, kind of on the spectrum of similar-sized communities or communities within the county, where we might often lose staff too. We actually, once we have one new person starting with us on Friday, and once he starts, we will have no open positions. We will be fully staffed for the first time in five-plus years or longer. I don't even know. So it's a big deal for us. It's a huge celebration for us to be fully staffed, but of course, retention is a large portion of that. We need to make sure that the team then stays. And so really appreciative of the board to approve, kind of looking at that long-term retention and supportive staff. So it's a big deal for us. It's a huge celebration for us to be fully staffed, but of course, retention is a large portion of that. We need to make sure that the team then stays, and so really appreciative of the board to approve kind of looking at that long-term retention and supportive staff. I've attended a couple of meetings recently, and one of those was the Denver Regional Council of Government Small Communities. And so I provided a little packet in there of some of the things we talked about. But one of the great things that comes out of that is a grants navigator who can help us look at this, the bipartisan infrastructure funding that's coming down for water, wastewater, roads and bridges, and can help us navigate what's going to make the most sense for our community. And so I also attended a meeting on Monday and really had a great understanding of what are the right grants for us? What are the opportunities that require zero match funding? And I'm starting to create those connections with the respective grant manager or our grants navigator to try to push us through. And and that can fund things like the secondary bridge or the Big Springs Egress actual construction after the the study is done. Broadband, culverts, just it feels like just about anything and everything, even a feasibility study for vacant land that town owns, and a lot of these are zero match. So some great things coming out from kind of federal and state grants. Do you want to talk housing need, Brett?
Sure, so just an update, Miranda and I presented at the Board of Trustees meeting. At that meeting, I believe we were at 20, was it 27 on our survey?
I think it was 29, yeah, 27 or 29, and then.
And we are at 66 now, so thank you.
Goes to end of the month, right?
Yes, correct, and yeah, and we so I just finished up, we did some videos with some community members, Board of Trustees members, staff. And we will be finishing up those edits and getting that on the housing website, the groups online to hopefully get more of that feedback. And it's a little bit easier than reading through an entire survey for some people. That's some of the feedback we did get from the Board of Trustees. The survey is very long. Not everyone has internet or a computer or even a phone to get on. Tomorrow I will be attending, forgot the name of it.
The Health and Human Services.
Yes, and trying to talk, get some more communication in regards to that. Really just accepting it in any form possible. It doesn't have to be the survey. There is still a way to retain that information and use it with the housing study to support changes that could be made. So right now, just really focusing on getting that feedback versus strategizing what's the next step from the community. And it does look like that is working right now, so hoping to see more after these videos and tomorrow's event.
Thanks, Brett. Well, our county sheriff's office contract was signed yesterday, so that's official. What that does mean is that they start the recruitment process for the officers and the sergeant. What it also means is that our extra duty officers can actually enforce our municipal code. So what we've been paying for to date is just their presence and to deal with priority one or urgent calls. This allows them to write speeding tickets or enforce other municipal things. So if you're a speeder, watch out. Now's the time. Coresponder, we officially finished that intergovernmental agreement for the coresponder. Lynette is here, and she will introduce herself to the board here shortly. Just a reminder, we've moved Troy, who was our former police and court clerk into an emergency manager position. And he quickly completed the entire National Emergency Management Basic Academy. And he's now moving on to a FEMA Incident Command Academy. So Troy is really working hard to get up to speed on all things Incident Command. And and what he will be is Incident Commander and will handle all disasters. He has 20 years of law enforcement and incident command experience, so it's great to have him in that dedicated role.
How long is that academy?
So he finished this basic academy in about three weeks. It was self-paced. He dedicated just about every day. The courses are eight plus hours, and he dedicated almost every day to completing one. Walked away with a ginormous to-do list of all the things we need to do, but really appreciate how he prioritized, at least being well-trained. And I'm not sure anyone in maybe some law enforcement, but I don't think anyone's ever completed the full basic academy. So really appreciative that Troy prioritized that going into that role. Streets Department, they, the Board of Trustees approved them to get a loan to get some new equipment, and that equipment is coming. So a new grader, their test driving new grader, new water truck, a flatbed. So you may have seen them out and about. They've been doing quite a bit of work. Obviously, weather is still a little challenging because we do have, it's quite wet. But they will, Mark will be coming before the Board of Trustees, and we'll let the Planning Commission know when that happens to try to go over his plan for the summer. It does feel like the when it gets warm, people swarm him a bit, and they're like, what about my area? And just giving him a little bit of space to work out a plan of addressing priorities. They are trying to dig ditches, which may look unseemly and just out there. They don't look great, but they're dealing with extensive runoff. And so we just are trying to make the best of the situation. But he will provide, I know there was a desire to have him maybe come speak to the Planning Commission. I think we'd like to combine efforts and have him do that potentially before the board, and you can come to that. Utilities Department also has a lot of projects coming to a head altogether. They're doing a ton of hydrant work, so you'll see a lot of hydrant flushing starting. And they are doing sewer line inspections. They've done about 20% of sewer line inspections and have already determined 10% of them need some repair. So it will really help us identify capital improvement projects going forward related to sewer. And recently, the Board of Trustees approved crediting back anyone who had to pay for a new meter reader in 2022 or 2023. They're going to cover the cost of that and then waive all costs of meter replacements if it breaks because of natural wear and tear. Meter and reader cost approximately $250, and so people will see that credit on their bill if they did in fact pay for one in the last year and a half. Or if we call you to come out to replace your meter, there will be no cost to you. So we're hoping that that incentivizes people to allow our team to go replace meters. Since I know for a lot of people that the barrier has been the cost of not of preferring to have their account estimated. The challenge is we estimate over 100 accounts, which means there is a chance that we are overbilling because we are operating off an estimate. So it is in our best interest and the user's best interest to have us come replace those meters, and we hope to have them all replaced within the next 18 months. Parks is busy. I sent you all an invite to plant trees next Wednesday from 10 to noon if you're available. So they're happy working on Barker Meadow Parks. We also have the town cleanup next Saturday. Prior to town cleanup, of course, is Mountain Forum for Peace, so you can start dropping off your items for Mountain Forum for Peace starting this Sunday, but then please come to town cleanup. And then.
Where's that drop off?
Here.
Here.
For Mountain Forum for Peace, and it's Sunday, Tuesday, Wednesday. And then they have a whole list of what they kind of can and can't accept in their flyers around the building. And then a lot of stuff they can't accept could then come to town cleanup on Saturday, the 3rd. And just a reminder, town cleanup, come early. The dumpsters have filled up, I feel like, the last two years, and so we don't always go until noon because we'll close once the dumpsters are full.
Is there any sort of organized effort, like cleaning up, picking up trash in a certain area, like at the park or whatever?
I know Wild Bear did two years ago that day, but we had nothing scheduled. The Town of Eldora is, they're doing a town-wide cleanup to bring to town our town cleanup, but I haven't heard of any other neighborhoods.
Okay.
Doing that, and we don't have the resources because all of our staff are at the cleanup event.
Right.
Peter Kasek is in our Public Engagement Manager role. He's working on a website called Engagement HQ. And what that is, is you'll log on and you'll be able to know exactly what's happening with the project. So if you're like, why are there no sidewalks yet for the transportation improvement project? We'll tell you exactly where we are in a project, what the future steps are. There's a back and forth communication opportunity. We'll have a frequently asked question site, and the point is to have a really robust dialogue with anyone who wants to come visit this site. So we hope to launch that here soon. And tons of events that they're working on this summer. I heard rumorings of a circus coming. Do you have more, I don't remember more, but like circus, jazz and wine, obviously the farmer's market, maybe some outdoor music concert series, 4th of July. Anything else, Brett, that I'm missing?
No, a couple of art walks and things along that lines with, I believe, some of the new businesses.
So we expect a busy summer, which will be fun. So yeah, I think that's it in a nutshell. There's always more, but that's what I'm gonna highlight for today.
Okay. Thank you. Are we done?
Can't be.
Unless you have additional questions or.
Anything for other business or? Jim and I had talked to Brett a little bit about the providing some input to Mark, the streets manager for. But I think unless anyone has any other comments, I think we'll just pass those comments on to Mark. That's essentially some advice, the way Chris Pelletier used to do the priority and and so forth. And then the communication back to the community, which sounds like it might be through Peter's site. And and he's going to be talking to Board of Trustees and us.
Yeah, and I would say Mark's very responsive. It's great if you give him a call, he's always going to give you a call back. And I just think, I just want to be mindful because he's been getting inundated, and it's a brand new team, brand new equipment. It's also the weather is not just not quite right yet, and so we do need people to understand that there was snow just three weeks ago, and now there's tons of runoff. And so he is prioritizing, I think, a lot. We've received a lot of praise. His team's been out there and and people have seen it. And and that might be different than historical experiences, but I do know that he is, every time I turn around, I have an email asking Mark to go do something. And so I just want to be really mindful that he is not, he is prioritizing the best he can, but he really would like to wait for the weather. And we don't have our water truck yet. We currently have a water truck that is barely holding on. And so significant grading activity would be challenging on these dirt roads if we don't have the access to the water truck. We did place the deposit and we should have that soon enough, but that is going to be a limitation for him as he looks at what he can and cannot do right now. So we're not going to grade and create a dust storm just because someone wants us to go grade. He really will have to take these things into consideration.
Plus, we had an inch or two of hail today up in Big Spring, so.
Right.
That wasn't fun.
But he, you know, he is, I would say, Mark, I really appreciate that Mark does. He calls back everybody who calls him, and so please don't hesitate to reach out. But I just think there is a bit of this, why aren't you getting to me and why aren't you getting to me right now going on? And that I just, my my communication back has often been like that, we really just have to be mindful that there are so many other factors here you have to consider, and he can't just jump every time someone calls.
He did a great job grading Spring Street last week, for the first time, and put in kind of a gutter thing down the side that makes a huge difference to the neighborhood.
That's great.
And they started working immediately after he finished them with, when the rain hit them, they're working.
Like within an hour.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's interesting because he cut a ditch recently somewhere, and and there there've been some complaints, and and people aren't happy with it. But he just had to cut this ditch in order to deal with the runoff, and he'll go back and of course fix it. But you may see these little ditches all over town where you're like, what is this? And there is a reason for doing so, but I think people aren't, it's never really happened previously. So I think some people are alarmed when it cuts right through the middle of a road, but it's not enough to damage a vehicle. But it's what he feels like needs to happen to try to control this runoff. So they will share that.
Hey, Miranda.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is Jim Reese. I wonder if that wouldn't be appropriate for Peter to maybe put out a little post on, you know, as our Public Engagement Manager on Facebook. You know, if there's some stuff that is being done that hasn't been done before, and maybe a reminder, you know, that, hey, our, you know, public works crews working, streets crews working as fast as they can. We don't have a water truck, you know, just kind of a quick little paragraph summary of what you just said there and put it out on on the town website, and maybe Nedheads, maybe that would stop some of the inundation of coal.
Yep, and Brett and Peter are one step ahead of you. They were already planning to do so, and and I think we're working on crafting what that language, a bit of like an FAQ. If you recall, we did an FAQ for snow plowing when people didn't quite understand what the plan was, and I'm correct, Brett, that similar thing here.
Yeah, after we discussed in the meeting, you know, kind of prepping for this, yeah, Peter and I think it would be a good idea, just those, some of those questions that we're seeing. And then, you know, some people don't, they think we already have this equipment. I think that's what's being brought up a lot is the equipment's here, it's warm, and it's just, they gotta start issue number one. I mean, if we have all this, you know, issue with the drainage and the runoff, how are we going to grade the roads? And and so I think, yeah, we're trying to get that information out so people aren't just assuming just because the board approved it, we already have it. So, yeah, we are working on that so that there is that, but like Miranda said, I mean, I'm Mark's roommate, and I hear him all the time making calls, even when it's not his day to be on. He does care about, he does go out there when somebody calls and they're like, this has been brought up many times, and he does assess the issue. And I watch him draw up all these things all the time, so he does care. I will say, just shoot him a message or shoot me a message if you want it coming from Miranda and I instead. That's totally fine.
Question, Nedpeds, when will that be dealt with?
Well, we hope to get the Transportation Alternative Project funding. I have to go, I was actually thinking about that yesterday. I have to go look and see when the award date is, but that was, the purpose of that grant was to replace all of Nedpeds on Second Street down to East Street. Now, if we don't receive that funding, I think that's obviously something we'll have to assess in maybe future, some of that future Dr. Cog or transportation funding that's out there. But I, we were told by CDI we had a really competitive grant, so I'm hopeful we're awarded. But while we're on sidewalks, you know, one of the, one of the unfortunate things is the delays, the substantial delays with Excel is going to push out the Transportation Improvement Project yet another year, where we won't be able to construct the sidewalks from RTD down to First Street until 2024. Same with safer main streets, which were the crosswalks in front of RTD to the library and visitor center to First Street. There's just a lot of third-party hoops that we're still trying to jump through. And we received extensions on both grants until June of 2025, but it's tough. I mean, it's three years in the making, and we just got Excel to stake old new pole lines today. But it happened, which is great, but it took three years to get to that point.
Excel, are they running, I saw them setting up late on Sunday. Do they go all night? Is that what they're doing?
Yes, so I can't, yeah, so we reached out to, we made them, and I also went on, you know, went and reached out to the business district. Those poles had to be removed as well, just switched over to the opposite side. And Sturgeon's actually the one who did the work, but yes, it was approved for that night with business owner's approval. And they actually ended up getting Mountain Co-op a generator just to make sure. So the, this group has been really great to work with from what I've seen so far. And it was done fast. I got no complaints. I didn't even know they did the work, so.
What I would say is they were going to try to do the work quickly, and and I do appreciate that Brett kind of called them, put a stop to that, really prioritize the communication to the businesses, ask them to do direct communication, but then Brett also doubled up to make sure everyone knew that this was coming, to assess what impact might have. And then Sturgeon did provide generators to any business that was going to be negatively impacted so that they didn't like lose food product or whatever it is. But, you know, we were trying to, you know, Brett really did a great job stopping the complaints before they happened, and it did occur without, so really appreciate Brett's efforts there.
Thanks to the Department of Precomplaints.
Yeah.
I will say, it was really nice. I'm glad we did that.
Hey, anything else? Any other? Comments, questions? If not?
I just want to thank Lynda for continuing.
Absolutely.
Signing on for four more years.
Yep, and Stephanie out there somewhere.
Yeah.
All right, and so, so Jim, you thought you could do a quick meeting?
Not too quick.
Okay.
It's funny, though, that that we had such a jam-packed meeting last month with with the training, and and this month, of course, plenty of time.
Yeah, I hope the training was good for particularly the newer.
Very good.
Yep, very informative.
Newer commissioners, I'm glad that went well. We've been trying to do this for at least six or nine months, so I'm glad it finally went.
Right. I have to defend Jim now. The reason why this meeting went so well is because he had two meetings of work sessions, worked through all the difficulties. So alls we had to do tonight was make a motion.
Okay, Ross.
I'll give you that 20 later, buddy.
Stole my thunder, did you? Okay, that's fine.
With that said, I move that we adjourn.
A well-built machine, that's what this means, so.
Absolutely.
Well, thank you, everyone. Do we have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
And second.
Second, Tom? All in favor?
Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Alrighty.
Good night, everyone.
10.
Really? Before the next.